Good evening, everyone. I am Lynn Barrett, Director of Finance for the Town of Plymouth. I am here this evening to present to you the financial budget presentation for town meeting. My presentation also includes some other important information, which I think will be helpful for you in your decision-making process. I want to start out by thanking all of you for your time and support in this virtual process. It is new for all of us, and it is difficult and challenging at sometimes. But I believe that we're all on this together, and we are going to get this done. I appreciate your stepping up to the challenge for this virtual town meeting process, and we really appreciate that. So, starting out, I'm going to share my screen. This presentation, I'm giving it to you the week before the August 3 meeting. So, sometimes when I talk, I might say today and that kind of thing. So, today's date is July 30. It's Thursday, the week before the presentations. So, before I get started, I just want to remind everyone, town meeting members especially, especially the newer ones, of the financial information that you can find on our website. If you go to the Town of Plymouth homepage, and you click on Departments, and you click on Finance Department, you will find this page. On the left-hand side, there's several links to important information. The one I want to focus on is the Financial Report Center. This link brings you to a laundry list of items that I believe are important financial documents and other pertinent information for all town meeting members and for the public in Plymouth at large. It has all of our audits, budget information, a lot of information on our debt, which includes our official statements and activity that we've done in debt in the last couple of years. Includes our financial policies. These are policies related to free cash and other fund balances in town. We have a Financial Report Center, which gives a financial history of the current year, monthly revenues and expenditures, annual reports that we give to the town clerk, budget reports, Schedule A, which is an important document that's our filing to the Department of Revenue of all revenues and expenditures for the town, which includes budgets and grants revolving and other special funds. Includes information on free cash and enterprise retained earnings. There's a tab for our OPEB, which is Other Post-Employment Benefits. This has information on our valuations. Since we've started doing valuations, it includes a special act, which was adopted by the legislature in town meeting, and includes other important information about OPEB. The CPA tab brings you a history of some expenditures that we have with the CPA Act. The Meals Tax has some information on Meals Tax, Stabilization Fund, and Glossary of Terms. On the left-hand side, we also have some other information that might be important to you. Division of Local Services, which guides us in everything that we do. Pilot agreements for the Entergy company that we have intact right now. These are agreements that are through Fiscal 21, and it is the town's intention to meet with Holtech, the new owner, to come up with a supplemental agreement. It also includes the link to town meeting information in our Transparency Center, which is basically our open checkbook. There's some new information that we just added this week. And we added this because of the number of phone calls and inquiries that we have been getting through the Treasurer Collector's Office with regards to billing, when bills have gone out, when the due dates are, information like that. So, we added, under the homepage, the Citizen Action Center. There's a link called Bill Information. And when you click on that, it'll bring you to this page. And this page, as it stands, July 30, today, the day I'm putting this together. Due to the pandemic, the Select Board adopted some special legislation offered by the state to waive penalties and interest for bills that were mailed and had a due date after March 10, as long as those bills were paid by June 29. This waiver information was posted on our website after they took this vote, until this included several bills that had gone out, some of which were motor vehicle excise due March 30 and after, water and sewer bills, which were due April 24, real estate and personal property bills due May 1. Many taxpayers took advantage of this waiver and paid their bills by June 29. However, there were several who did not pay by June 29. In the middle of July, about two weeks after that, the town sent out demand notices for all those unpaid bills, which included a demand fee and interest added dating back to the due dates of the particular bill. Having this information on our website will hopefully be helpful to people regarding when these bills go out, when's the due date, within how much time we send out demands, when penalties and interest are added, what happens after demands are due. For example, on these water and sewer demands that were just sent out, the town, they would do yesterday. The town will begin water hangers and shut-offs within the next few weeks in working with the Water Department. So, if people still haven't unpaid water and sewer bill, my recommendation would be to pay that as soon as possible. Real Estate and Personal Property Taxes, demands are due yesterday. Tax Takings would be the next step for tax liens. That usually happens within the next few months. Motor Vehicle Excise Tax Demands are due tomorrow, July 31. The town's deputy collector will begin the warrant process on those by August 17, which will include additional fees. So, it's really important that taxpayers pay your bills in a timely manner and to have this information put out there so that if you haven't gotten a bill, that you please call us at the Collector's Office. Also, for new homeowners who recently purchased a home, at the closing, you are told that the new bill will continue to be mailed to the old owner because it is always mailed to the owner of record as of January 1 in a particular year. So, you will need to contact the Assessor's Office to get an in-care of address added to your bill so that the post office would send it in care of you. Sometimes the post office will return those, so we advise you to continue to follow up with the Collector's Office to receive a copy of your bill. The town now is on a quarterly basis with water and sewer bills. So, under normal circumstances, the due dates will fall in the following months, August, November, February, and May. So, currently, right now, for Fiscal 21, with our new bills, the water and sewer bills went out. They were mailed on July 22. They're due on August 24. Real Estate and Personal Property Taxes were mailed on June 30 for the first and second quarter. So, the first quarter is due August 1. Second quarter is due November 1. At the bottom of this Bill Information page is the link to bring you to the online payments center, which is Unipay, which is our third-party provider for you to be able to pay your bills online for these particular ones that we're going to post here. As we go forward, we'll continue to add things on here, and we'll take the old items off. The next topic I wanted to talk to you about is the Plymouth County Cares Program. This topic does not pertain directly to the deliberations at town meeting, but I believe it's important to discuss the Coronavirus Relief Fund called Plymouth County Cares. Plymouth County received over $90 million as part of the Federal Cares Act, Coronavirus Relief Funds. This money is being dispersed to the Plymouth County communities based on a reimbursement program for costs associated with the response and/or mitigation of the COVID-19 spread through December 30. The county has allocated a little more than half of this funding in phases as seen in this schedule. Plymouth's allocation is $5.4 million based on population, COVID case numbers, and elderly population. There will be more allocations in future phases. This information, along with the federal guidance of what is eligible for reimbursement, frequently asked questions, and other important information can be found on the Plymouth County Commissioner's website. This spreadsheet, as of July 17, which is on the Plymouth County Cares website, the county has reimbursed 10 communities a total of $1.9 million. According to their website minutes of their July 10 meeting, the treasurer reported that a total of 46 applications from 25 communities for a total of $7.4 million had been received and were being processed and hoped that more would be coming forward to a future meeting for approval. So, Plymouth's status is indicated in this spreadsheet. So, over on the left-hand side, I've identified the three phases that they have allocated the money out, Phases 1, 2, and 3, for a total of $5.4 million. The town, under the first phase, expended and submitted their first application for $601,656.43. That application is under review. We have received some questions and have answered those questions and in hopes that we are one of those submittals that will be going to a future Commissioner's meeting for approval. Currently, right now, we are in the process of submitting our second application for reimbursement tomorrow, July 31. And that application is under Phase 2 and Phase 3, which add up to about $193,000 and some change. According to their website, the Phase 1 monies that remain get forwarded into Phase 2. So, we still have available to us under these three phases, $3.7 million based on the applications that we've submitted so far. And we have also approved internally requisitions that total $930,661.68. These expenditures and others include, in orders, include expenses for all town departments, including the schools, and range from personal services of overtime related to COVID-19, cleaning services, supplies and equipment, PPE signage, reopening supplies and equipment, technology for working and educating remotely, and other COVID-19-related expenditures. While the current federal guidance does not allow the funds to be used for revenue replacement, we are hoping that the legislation may change on that or that other relief may be voted by the federal government. You will see in the budget discussion that revenues are expected to recede based on the pandemic effect on the state and economy. I hope you're all familiar with this website page, which is the Quick Links. And on the Quick Links is the Town Meeting Information link. When you click that link, that brings you to everything associated with the current town meeting. On top of this page, which you can't see here, it also includes a link to previous town meetings. And we have on that page through all the way back to 2015, every town meeting and all the pertinent information that was associated with each of those meetings. So, this page is the homepage for all the items related to the current meeting. This is a screenshot of what is out there. So, everything that is on this page has been mailed to you either in one of two mailings. The first mailing happened while we were working remotely, probably back in late April or May. The books for town meeting. There were two blue books and a red book, and then the school budget book. The two blue books, one of them is the Advisory and Finance Recommendation Book. One of them is the Budget Book. And then the red book was the book for the Special Town Meeting. So, included in there is all kinds of information regarding town meeting and the recommendations from Advisory and Finance and the detail behind that. The most recent mailing that we sent you a couple of weeks ago included a supplement, Supplement Number 1, for the, and we called it Supplement 1 Spring Virtual Town Meeting because now we're having it in August, even though it's our spring meeting. And that included new recommendations from Advisory and Finance Committee on the budget. It also included backup associated with those budget decisions. So, it included Sources and Uses, page, which is Page 18 and 19, which I will talk about in further detail later regarding the budget, what the budget looked like in April, if we had gone to town meeting in April, and then what it looked like after the COVID-19 effect, after the pandemic effect. Because we have made a lot of various different assumptions on the budget, and we have made some corresponding reductions to the budget. Also included in that mailing was the draft Spring Town Meeting motions. That includes funding sources of all of the various articles and basically how each town meeting vote is going to be recommended to you. Those motions are draft form, and there will be a final motion document that will be available to town meeting members on the website. And if time prevails, we will mail those motions to you. However, motions do change up until and including at town meeting. So, we'll do the best we can. A lot of people have been asking about what is our free cash balance? What are we using free cash for? And I wanted to give you some information on that. For those of you who don't know what free cash is, it's a term used by the Department of Revenue to describe a revenue source that results from the calculation as of July 1 of a community's remaining unrestricted funds from its operations of the previous fiscal year based on the balance sheet as of June 30. It typically includes actual receipts in excess of revenue, estimates and unspent amounts in departmental budget line items for the year just ending, plus unexpended free cash from the previous year. Free cash is offset by property tax receivables and certain deficits, and as a result, can be a negative number. This schedule describes the balance remaining after the October Fall Annual Town Meeting and what this meeting's recommendations of spending are. The town's policy is to use for capital and more one-time expenditures, not as a recurring funding source for the budget. So, you'll see in this list that most of the recommendations are for capital items that you will see in the Special Town Meeting Book and motions, and then in the Annual Town Meeting Book and motions. So, one item that we use funding of free cash and operating budget is funds towards the investment into our OPEB trust fund. Under normal circumstances, our policy is to deposit at least 1% of our covered payroll into our OPEB trust fund to help offset the liability of the OPEB. Because of the pandemic, I am recommending and had recommended to the Board and Advisory and Finance Committee to reduce that 1%, which was over $1 million, to $0.5 million. The other amount would have come from taxes. So, this amount that would be going into the trust fund would be coming from free cash. I thought that this was a way to reduce the amount of taxes that would have to be raised in this unprecedented year. As you can see, at the annual, we have various capital projects being funded through free cash under Article 9A, and then other items. So, the recommendation, after all these expenditures, would leave a balance in the free cash of $1,146,008. And that's of the free cash that had been certified last year as of July 1, 19. When we finish closing our books for 2020, we will have a new free cash certification that will happen prior to our Fall Annual Town Meeting. The same goes for the Sewer Enterprise Fund. Retained earnings, like free cash for the general fund, is certified by the Department of Revenue for enterprise funds. This money can be used for capital projects and to reduce the rates that are established within those enterprise funds. And we are doing just that in the articles going forward to town meeting. The Sewer Enterprise Fund is going through a transition this coming fiscal year in transferring to a new operator, from Veolia to Woodward and Curran, and the financing of the sewer emergency project. So, the budget has been adjusted for the new operator, and the financing of the sewer project is in a tentative stage. So, there is some funding for it if it happens during this particular fiscal year. But as it stands right now, the town is actually in the closeout process with our consulting engineer with DEP to close out the sewer emergency project. Town meeting originally appropriated or authorized us to spend $48.2 million for the redundancy, the repair of the Force Main, and the redundant main. So, we have completed that project. We're in the closeout process. We actually have almost a couple hundred thousand dollars remaining in that article that will not be spent or borrowed. But this is basically how it breaks down the financing and funding and how we're going to pay the $48.2 million off. So, initially, we got a small settlement from Veolia during the, sort of the research phase of why, what happened with the Force Main. And that was about $83,000. Our first loan with Massachusetts Clean Water Trust was borrowed back in September of 2018. That loan was $11,305,843. That loan is for 2.4% interest. It's a 30-year loan. And each year, principal and interest is included in the Sewer Enterprise Fund for the rate payers to pay that. We also received a principal forgiveness loan, a principal forgiveness off of that first loan, which was $744,157. So, that money was just an outright grant from Massachusetts Clean Water Trust. Last October, we settled with Veolia and others our court action that we had taken against them. That settlement totaled $22,825,000. That settlement is going to go towards paying the costs associated with this project and reducing the amount that we are going to end up having to borrow through the Sewer Enterprise Fund. So, the amount remaining to borrow is approximately $13,241,000. And once we close out the project with DEP, we will work with Massachusetts Clean Water Trust, the state revolving fund, to finalize the borrowing for that. And that, because that hasn't happened yet, we're not on the radar screen for them to put us into a long-term borrowing status for that. So, that's still on hold, and we're actually hoping to hold off on that as much as possible. And the reason for that is we hope that the current year debt or current debt on the Force Main in the original sewer plant will be paid off and that this would get added on as new debt. A large chunk of that debt for the original Force Main and sewer plant, there's a principal and interest payment in Fiscal 21 that is going to finish paying off that loan, and that is $1.2 million. The second amount that's in the budget, it's about $0.5 million principal and interest every year, and that will continue until it gets paid off in Fiscal 23. So, sometime between Fiscal 21 and 23 will be entering into a long-term loan agreement with the Clean Water Trust for that $13 million. So, if you go back to this page, the amount of money that we're funding at town meeting for the Sewer Enterprise Fund, we're recommending to use $1 million from the sewer retained earnings for assistance with the rates to fund the operating budget. And that's primarily due to that debt that we're going to be paying off. Also, we're recommending to use $649,600 of retained earnings toward capital. In the Water Enterprise Fund, we're recommending to use $1.5 million towards capital and then $3,747 towards unpaid bill in Article 3 of the Special Town Meeting. Solid Waste, we're doing the same. We're recommending to use $81,403 to help offset increases in that rate. The 2020 rate was $168 to go to the transfer station. We increased it to $170. And we actually have to add some money to that budget because the CMAS contract is going to be expiring for tonnages, and that contract will increase the tonnage, the per-ton amount to dispose of the trash. It could go up to upwards to almost $90 a ton. So, that's something that we're adding to the budget that's in the budget you're voting and going to offset some of that increase with the retained earnings. Then we're also recommending to use $424,490 for capital. So, these are the articles that you'll be voting at the annual town meeting to fund each of the operating budgets for the General Fund, the Water, Sewer, Solid Waste, Airport, and Cable Enterprise Funds. The total of all these budgets being recommended for August is $252,621,783. Back in April, prior to the pandemic, the recommendation from Advisory and Finance This is a reduction of $4,538,652 from the April recommendation. And it's an overall increase of $5,284,889 over the 2020 revised budget, the 2.14% increase overall for all funds. I mentioned earlier that in the Supplement 1, there is a Sources and Uses document on Pages 18 and 19 of that document that lays out the revenue sources that are being recommended for the General Fund operating budget that was just on the previous page. And it also spells out that budget broken up by department and any other things that need to be raised within that budget for the year. So, the next few slides are going to be excerpts of that Sources and Uses document. This particular slide is the excerpt of the state aid, the cherry-sheep money that we get, the Chapter 70 money, general municipal aid, any reimbursement for benefits, exemptions, state-owned land, and public libraries. So, during the pandemic, we obviously got concerned that revenues are going to be restricted, and we're going to see an effect on this budget due to that. My best estimates are from the last time we had a recession, which was back in 2009. At that time, the state cut our state aid by almost 11%. They did it They did a nine C cut within the year after we had already gone to town meeting. So we had to reduce very quickly. So in lieu of doing that midyear, we chose to estimate what that reduction may be now, and we're estimating almost a ten and a half percent decrease. And that decrease comes up to about three, almost three point five million that we're expecting. The state aid will decrease. Now, we level funded state aid, so if the state comes back and says, oh, you know, we're not going to cut you, we're going to level fund you or something like that, then we'll be in a very good position. However, if they go the other way and do a larger increase than ten and a half percent, we will, we will have to address that at a future town meeting, which would be in the fall, the fall annual town meeting. So that's the information on the state aid. As far as local receipts, again, our best information on recession and how a recession affects our local economy, I looked back to two thousand and nine and what happened in that particular year and the years following. That information is also included in the supplement one report that was mailed to you a couple of weeks ago. I included in there a page of historical local receipt revenue and state aid. It's actually on page on page twenty one. It's actually a sixteen year historical trend of receipts. And I tried to highlight the various areas of where we saw retraction. And in this budget going into twenty one, I am estimating some of the same decreases that we saw back then. And then further in this presentation, you'll see that the last quarter of fiscal twenty, we also saw some of these decreases happening already. So that only confirmed my sort of recommendation that we should, we should reduce. So the total of these items on the local receipt side come to approximately two point three million. So that is a total of five point eight million on receipts that have been reduced based on the COVID nineteen effects. We met with the selectmen early on in May. I believe some of the dates might be not as good because I have COVID brain, but anyway. We met with them with these estimates and said, quite possibly, we could have a reduction of almost five point eight million dollars in in revenue on this budget. So the selectmen, we we talked about doing two different scenarios. What would a five point eight million dollar cut look like? And then what would a cut of like half of that look like? Almost, almost three million dollars. So the selectmen asked us to look for the three million dollar cut, basically. So we with the schools, we both looked at our budgets and we came up with a cut of the school cut, one point nine million dollars, which was about sixty five percent of that three million dollar cut. And then the town cut approximately almost one point three million dollars on the town side. And then in addition to that, we came up with some other cuts to fix costs and debt based on some actual items that were that came in. We did our actual borrowing in June and we were able to come up with a cut of three hundred and twenty four thousand to the debt budget. I I recommended the cut to the OPEB trust, which was another half a million or so. We also adjusted our all town insurance, which is our property and casualty and workers' comp. We saw some reductions on the workers' comp side. So we made some other adjustments to the budget that helped get us to where we need to get. So that was that total of approximately four point, almost four point two, four point three million back here. So we have a four point five million, four point five million dollar reduction. So of the revenue cut of five point eight million, we were able to come up with approximately four point five million dollars worth of cuts. On the, this slide right here just gives you another section of that sources and uses, which describes all of the available funds that we use to fund the budget. So you'll see the only change to this was we increased some of the the pavement management fund that funds the principal and interest for the pavement management plan. That increased forty eight thousand dollars. And then we had a rounding error that we had to add to another item. So in Article seven A, you'll see in the motion that all of these various funding sources help fund the budget. And then the rest of it comes from raising appropriate of the taxes, which includes raising the state aid that we get and then also raising the local receipts that we just talked about in the last couple of slides. Actually, local receipts and state aid. The property taxes I'm going to talk about in the next slide. This slide includes information on the property taxes. So the recommendation back in April on the original budget was to raise one hundred and ninety two million of property taxes. This estimate included our two and a half percent growth, which is four point four million, new growth estimate of three million, a debt exclusion of seven point eight million, and then use of unused levy capacity from four million down to two million. So that got us to the hundred and ninety two million. Based on the cuts that were made to the budget and the reductions in the other revenue sources, we need to raise another nine hundred and thirty eight thousand from the unused levy capacity down to one point eight million. The total reduction in other revenues was five point eight million. We were able to come up with approximately four point two million dollars worth of reductions to the general fund budget. And when you take the five point eight and you subtract the four point two, you get down to one point six approximately. So we need to find a portion of that somewhere and it's it's in the property taxes. And the other portion of it is actually something that happened with the other items that need to be raised. So back in April, we were estimating that we were going to have a snow and ice deficit of seven hundred and nine thousand. And usually every year, we do have a snow and ice deficit. In the last fifteen years, we've only had one other year where we have not had a deficit in snow and ice. So that was back in two thousand and twelve, I believe. And this year, to twenty twenty, is another year. So we stayed well within our snow and ice budget, so we did not have to, we don't have to raise any snow and ice deficits. So that takes off the seven hundred, that takes off point seven of this deficit, so the rest of it needs to be raised through taxes. Now, in saying that, when we look at the property taxes, it does include new growth of three million. Those are estimates. So if new growth comes in any higher, that amount will increase our unused levy capacity balance. The other thing that will happen is if state aid comes in any higher than what we had estimated in our cut or if we're able to adjust any of our local receipts based on trends, then we won't have to raise as much money in the property taxes. So right now, based on this recommended budget and based on current values of twenty twenty, because that is still being determined, values will be set sometime in November. And new growth is being collected right now by the assessors. That's for everything through June thirtieth of twenty twenty. So those numbers will know leading into our fall annual town meeting. But based on these numbers and the revenue that needs to be raised, the tax rate would be approximately seventeen dollars and twenty cents. Because the values will most likely increase, especially based on sales that have happened in Plymouth, the tax rate would be probably somewhere in the high, the high sixteen, sixteen dollar range. But it it probably won't be over seventeen dollars. So that's the funding from the property taxes. As far as the budget is concerned, this is a little bit more detail on the original recommended budget in April, the cuts that we made to each area, and then the new budget that we're recommending for the general fund. This is strictly just the general fund budget, two hundred and thirty four million, one hundred and ten thousand, two oh five. The cuts of four point two million, you can see the one point nine million coming from the school, the three hundred and twenty four thousand from debt, another seven hundred and eleven thousand from fixed costs. And then across the board, every other department was affected. And these cuts include cuts to overtime, cuts to meetings, training and travel, cuts to salaries, which was a combination of layoffs, not funding vacant positions and retirements. So that's where we came up with the four point two million. A lot of you have been asking questions regarding what does twenty twenty look like? Where are we going to end up the twenty twenty year? So this very similar type of document is our budget to actual. Looks like the sources and uses document, but it spells out what our budget was for the for last year, for twenty twenty, and what we actually received. And I'll just go through this quickly, but because of the pandemic and because of some of the decisions that we made regarding the special legislation, we did see a significant retraction in revenues in the fourth quarter. One item, the deadline for exemptions was extended due to a vote by the select board to adopt special legislation from April one to June one. So as a result, the reimbursement for the exemptions will be delayed. The assessors office has completed that process there and in the process of submitting that exemption reimbursement to the state. And hopefully, they will turn that around fairly quickly. And if we get that in during the month of August, I can accrue that revenue back to June thirtieth. If we don't, then it will get posted in twenty one. Another item that usually gets reconciled at the end of the year, and a lot of it has to do with updated student population numbers, is the charter school reimbursement. But right now, that is sitting at a, what we actually received came in less than what was on the cherry sheet. This is a local receipt section, so the motor vehicle excise actually did come in greater than what we had budgeted. However, we do budget according to a formula where we can generate some money to put into the pavement management stabilization fund to help fund the principal and interest on the pavement management plan because there was a goal to try to use more of the motor vehicle excise for roads. So even though we did receive more money than we budgeted, we did have outstanding receivable at June thirtieth of approximately one point two million dollars. So that money, if it comes in, it will come in, it obviously will come in, but it's going to come in after June thirtieth in fiscal twenty one. And we can't accrue back any revenue for motor vehicle excise. The other item where we're going to see some receding is on the hotel motel tax. Even though we exceeded our budget in the current fiscal year for hotel motel through the third quarter, we are going to see a reduction in that going forward. We saw it in the fourth quarter receipt that we received for hotel motel. And we'll probably see it lag a little bit going into this following fiscal year as the pandemic continues. One thing that did come in that we we really weren't sure how much we were going to get or even when the establishments were going to open was the cannabis recreational tax for three percent. So the recreational tax facility opened, I believe, the first week of February. They probably closed sometime the end of March, along with everybody else, and then opened up sometime maybe the end of June during the first or second opening phase. And but the three percent tax that we received on their sales that we received at the end of June was thirty eight thousand, over thirty eight thousand dollars. This is an item that we include as a local receipt towards the general fund. However, Department of Revenue will not allow you to estimate, include that as an estimate in your budget until you have at least one year of historical trend on receipts for the cannabis tax. So when we go to budget our fiscal twenty two budget, we will be able to include the one year of receipts, you know, from February until the following February in in next year's budget. As you can see, the penalties and interest was down in the fourth quarter. That was due to the vote by the select board to waive all penalties and interest for all those payments after March thirtieth. And then the items that are highlighted in yellow are really just retractions that we saw because, one, the building was closed to the public. There may not have been as much activity as there would have been under normal circumstances. And then also just a slowness of the economy and people just not doing certain things. So we did see a retraction on all those revenues. And then in the property tax area, we collected approximately ninety seven point eighty four percent of what we budgeted. However, we still have a significance, had a significant amount outstanding at June thirtieth of about three point four million. The rest of it includes abatements and exemptions that were approved, but the statute does allow us to accrue revenue received the sixty days after June thirtieth. So for the month of July and the month of August, I can accrue back to June thirtieth the money that comes in for the twenty twenty real estate. So we will do that. We do that every year in hopes that this total deficit at the bottom, which is the two point six million, will be reduced by the amount that we collect on the real estate taxes and then quite possibly the amount that we get in from the state on the exemptions. So that is, that is something that we're hoping for. This particular budget and actual sheet we do every year because, one, we have to re-report it to the Department of Revenue on page three of our recap. And then we also include it in the reconciliation of our June thirtieth balance sheet when they certify free cash. So a lot of times, under normal circumstances, the budget to actual on revenues, the the difference is actually a positive and not a negative. So I just wanted to show you the previous years, two thousand and nineteen. And these documents are in the town report, which is the book that gets handed out by the clerk's office. But you can see the budget to actual for the previous years, we had received the exemptions in a timely manner, so there was no deficit there. There was a deficit on the charter school reimbursement. And like I said, that's really based on a reconciliation of student population. The number that we have to include on The number that we have to include on, uh, in our budget comes from the cherry sheet and we have no control over that. On local receipts, we actually did really well on all the local receipts except for, the reimbursement that we get on school Medicaid. And the only reason for that is the eligibility for certain items on that reimbursement had changed. So going forward, we have already adjusted what the budget is for that item. But you can see that the budget to actual, we were in a positive position of two point seven million. And then when you get down into the property tax area, the collection rate was much better the previous year. So net, at the bottom, the total, um, budget to actual, we're in a positive position of two point two million. So, the current year, twenty twenty, we're in a negative of two point six and then this was a positive of two point two. So that's a swing of, let's see, that's a swing year over year of almost four point eight million dollars. So that was concerning to me at the end of the year. Granted, we are going to see that sixty day accrual on property taxes and hopefully we'll get in the, the exemptions reimbursement. And then the, the state actually allows you, if you have a revenue deficit, which we quite possibly could, that revenue deficit can be offset by any savings in your budget. So on the budget side, even though we haven't closed yet and we're still reconciling all encumbrances for the year, the savings side of the budget is at least three million dollars on the school side and almost five million dollars on the town side. So we should end the year in a positive position. But that, um, I'll hopefully be able to have more information for that around town meeting time. Definitely, um, by the, by the end of, um, the summer in September when we start meeting on the fall annual town meeting. So this slide I wanted to show you because this is the, um, a result of the financial forecasting modeling tool that we have been using with the select board to identify the possibility of where the town's budget is going. And if, if the town were to continue on the track that we were on, that we would have to have an override at some point at a future date. The town manager and myself have been meeting with the select board and advisory and finance over the last couple of years and reporting this information to them in hopes that, um, policy decisions and guidance, uh, will lead us in a direction to avoid a future override. And, um, the select board did vote last week. The information is included in the town manager's report to adopt a policy that will avoid what this looks like right here, which, uh, in twenty twenty-one, we are at excess levy capacity of one point eight million. But as you go out future years, based on the current cut budget and what the estimates are in the budget that would increase based on step increases, lane changes, any contractual increases in contracts and other items under the expenditures, this is what would happen in future years, which would be a need to have a future override. So, they did discuss and vote on some policy. We're very, um, happy about that. They gave us some guidance on what to do with, um, the negotiations that are going to be starting with the unions because all union contracts are going to expire at the end of fiscal twenty-one. So, there will need to be a new contract for fiscals twenty twenty-two, twenty-three, and twenty-four. But it's not all doom and gloom. I just want to end with a positive note that, um, the budgets before you are balanced. There are revenue sources to fund these budgets. We still, the state aid number is still unknown. We have heard some scuttlebutt that it may not be as bad as we thought it was. But, I mean, obviously, that still remains to be seen, but we're hopeful. We're also hopeful on the final year-end close and, um, what everything looks like after we close it out and do all of our accruals and we, we fine tune the savings on the budget side because, um, as you know, the schools were closed, the town buildings were closed. We do have some significant savings in some of the line items in the budgets that will help, um, offset any of those revenue reductions. We also are going to have, um, some more information on local receipts now that we're, you know, now that things are sort of starting to reopen a little bit and things are starting to be a little bit more positive, um, and hopefully that will continue, that local receipts, we'll track those and see how those look and if we need to make any adjustments. New growth, as I said before, we'll know that in the fall when the assessors are all done doing, um, their inspections and, um, calculations and those kinds of things. And then, um, also, there have been a lot of other changes to, um, operations that have not been incorporated in the budget yet because we just weren't sure when certain buildings are going to be reopening. Once that's determined, when those buildings are going to reopen and we can, um, either hire back some staff that was laid off or, or make some adjustments, that we will be making more adjustments to the budget for the fall annual town meeting. There'd be some salary reductions and some fuel and utility reductions and, and that kind of thing. So there is still room for modification before we go to set our tax rate in December. We're going to try to keep that tax rate down below the seventeen dollars. That is a goal of mine and, um, and I think we're going to make it. Okay, so that's the end of my presentation. As always, if anyone has any questions, I'll be available the night of the presentation preview and town meeting to answer any of those questions. I've also included my contact information, my email address and phone number, so anyone can call. I want to thank you again for be, uh, being supportive in this process and, um, coming to town meeting and doing it virtually so that we can adopt an annual budget. We've been working on these one-twelfth budgets and even though it's a tool that the stat, statute, the legislature has given us, it has been quite challenging. So, um, if we can be successful in August and vote this budget, it will be greatly appreciated. And we will continue to monitor and look at changes that can be made to the budget to help, uh, reduce any strain on the taxpayers. Thank you very much.